To the special. Over twenty. Welcome to the Thursday, October twentieth, twenty nine or two thousand twenty-two. Uh, City of Manistee Planning Commission. Meeting, please rise for the pledge.
I have to turn around.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slawinski. Commissioner Smansky. Mr. Memberto. Mr. Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner McBride.
Here.
Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitler.
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda at this time of the planning commission can or may approve. The October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two agenda. There are motion. Okay, motion by Roger second. By Marlene in a discussion. None, please take roll.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner, yes. Chair Whitler.
Yes, thank you. Approval of minutes, no, no approval of minutes is included in for work session. Public comment? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on tonight's agenda? So what did you say? Are you sure? He's lost. Yeah, he escaped. New business, work session. Places of assembly large in C three district. Planning Commission will. Contribute. Will contribute to the planning. Exercise concerning the incorporation of places of public. Assembly large. As a special land use that does not require key street frontage in the C three central business district. So I'll turn it over.
Yes, and included with your agenda today is, um, you know, a couple memos that you guys had seen previously. So I just kind of wanted to include the documentation that we've been working off of since the beginning of this. And then we also put together a, so that includes the application, um, from the applicant, obviously. The couple of memos, and then we also included, this is something you hadn't seen yet, uh, a map of the. The subject property for the applicant, but keep in mind that this would be if approved allowable for as an allowable use for the entirety of the district. But just to give an idea for this particular property, we did put a two hundred foot radius on the property. So you have an idea of what. Um, parking requirements within two hundred feet would look like as an example for this particular property.
Yeah, I know we talked about the city parking lot, which is.
It looks like there's a couple of city parking lots that may be adjacent here.
Yeah, the one on Green Bush is out of that disc, out of that. Uh, radius. So would would street parking be considered? Parking for this?
Not under the, the current regulation of the ordinance. So it does, the ordinance does allow for shared parking scenarios. Um, so I would be, you know, accepting of interpreting that to be some kind of. Permanent and Mike and I were talking about this. So it'd have to be something permanent, not necessarily a lease, you know, um, because we wouldn't want them to. Lose parking spots over the course of time under an allowable use. But yeah, there would be some options for shared parking or purchasing parking from other entities that could. Qualify as the allowable parking within two hundred feet of an establishment. And I do think that if this amendment is approved, allowing for the parking within two hundred feet. Um, on River Street and within the C three district is appropriate because, you know, we all know that. Ample parking isn't all over River Street, so it can be really limiting. And I think in a sense, requiring parking is. Is going to be inherently limiting for this use anyway. Um, so if you do approve it, I don't think we're gonna just all of a sudden start seeing. Big parking lots and big places of public assembly, because there really are only so many places that you'd be able to.
Right.
To utilize it.
Yep.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and from looking at the master plan, uh, the one blurb that I had found about the C three district, we know that our master plans are intentionally vague. But I would say that, you know, it supports this type of use with entertainment, um, you know, the other types of uses in the district. But we don't have anything that's, you know. Completely in support or against. So ultimately, it will just be up to the commission and your. You know, intent and vision for Manistee if you feel that this is appropriate.
Okay. What's the, uh, thinking of the commissioners?
Personally, I feel, I feel at least I should go along with the recommendation there from the staff. I mean, she's the one that knows more than we do about it. Or else you see what it is. I don't, we have, we haven't really had a problem with parking.
Well, probably inherently, there's always. Problems with parking down in that area, you know, if, if you can't park in front of the store, if you know, people complain.
Yeah.
After being on Mackinac Island, I would, I think it'd be really cool to see no cars on River Street, but I know that's a pipe dream.
Where would all the work store owners, you know, park?
Right.
Now they kind of give fun shops. Candy store.
Yeah.
Like stuff.
We need to.
Go downtown to find a place to park. And you keep adding more and more things. And as. You know, right now they're starting getting shots down there to. You know, when, when, when I first came here, they weren't until nine o'clock at night downtown was busy and had all kinds of stores. They just kind of wheel away there. But if you start having. Events in that building. And the restaurants and the movie. It's like everybody's gonna be fighting for space.
Well, and that's why it would, I think that it would be in. Your best interest to require parking for this type of use if you're gonna open it up downtown. I do think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, because yeah, if you're gonna have over a hundred people at an event. And you're wanting them to just park on River Street, I don't think that's really gonna fly.
We have something at Ram's though.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's using the church and everything.
Right. And I know that sometimes people will want to use that as justification, but you know, we know that's not ideal and we know that the Ramsdale is a longstanding business and. It's not something that the city necessarily wants to invite, you know, more of. Um, something interesting from my conference, though, that I will say is that it does seem. Communities across Michigan are eliminating parking standards, more specifically in their residential districts to, you know. Allow for more opportunity for housing, um, eliminating parking standards and lessening. Lot area minimums for things like duplexes, um, but I think in downtown. For a use of this caliber, it would still be appropriate to require parking.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. If you guys want a lot for the use.
Well. Large, large assembly. Um, you know, it. We don't know what he's going after, you know, is it weddings or?
I think that's his intention, but yeah, ultimately, we don't. You know, we don't know definitively what he really will end up doing. Yeah.
But, you know, how many events will we have there? He's. We don't, we don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there are many wedding venues around town. One over here. Down there, um, you know, th- there's a number of venues.
Mm-hmm.
With that, Mark, or with that in mind, venues for wedding, don't you need to announce their whole alcoholics? Or not all, well, I know.
Most people want one.
I'm sorry. Both weddings have alcohol. But I mean, now there again, is that a question in some of these places? Alcohol. Um, I mean, can you have a, a wedding here with alcohol?
Zoning wouldn't necessarily dictate a liquor license. They'd have to get a liquor license for the, um, for the establishment. And I'm not sure what kind of laws come into place. I know there's limits on liquor license. I don't know what is further, but that would be controlled by whatever.
Well, yeah.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I was just, it's part of the.
Would, would they? Bless you. Would the special? Liquor license that the DDA have?
I think that they have some for, that you can purchase.
And it's seating for seventy-five people, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm Smoke on the Water got a special alcohol license for that event, so you can get one for, if they're pricey.
Mm-hmm.
But you can get rid of one event, so. My concern with this is, is. Too old. Um. He's got the place for sale, so we have no idea what's gonna happen. So, and I really. I feel uncomfortable changing. The zoning in the district to try and appease him. I just think it's a bad idea to have that many people. If, if we're gonna require the parking, what it's written now, it's my understanding we have to require the parking or something.
You don't necessarily have to require parking. Um, the way the ordinance is written now, it requires key street frontage. But does not require parking.
Right.
But. You don't really see, keep River Street isn't a key street, so the key streets run kind of, you know. On the outskirts of our main downtown, um. And, you know. I would say if you're concerned about this type of use at this particular property, I know I keep saying this, but just keep in mind that it would be for the entirety of the C three. So is that?
That is my concern. Right. We're, we're changing, we're not only changing it for this one building, we're changing it for the entire district and I really. Have a problem with. Trying to appease one person and changing it for everybody.
But there's.
Especially when they're, they have no plans of staying in town. They're, they're liquidating whatever properties they keep.
They're my team, so.
Yes. And my other question is, who is this guy? Because he's not the owner.
He is the property manager of Hickory, Hickory Properties LLC, but also, um, with this application, he'd included a specific property, but really his request is not. You know, his request isn't for the specific property, so I wouldn't necessarily require proof of ownership. From someone requesting an amendment for an overall amendment. That's why it kind of confuses things with him, including a specific property. Um, because technically. You know, he's not requesting a use for this property. He's requesting it for the district, so. Um, yeah, I know that he's the manager, but he wouldn't have to. Own really any property. In the C three, like he could request a use without even owning a property down there, um. Yeah, and then with. Places of public assembly small, that is already an allowable use where he could utilize up to a hundred people. Um, currently, so, and I think for that place is probably pretty nice size.
Yeah, I mean, once you get over a hundred, it's gonna be, and that includes the staffing as well, not just.
Um, I would have to look more closely at the ordinance, but I, I think it relates to the gathering of a hundred people or less.
But in the same.
Or less than a hundred.
You've got, uh. Should, you know, you've got servers and haters. Servers and.
Well, and, yeah, and to bring it back around to the entirety of the C three district, it sounds like the sentiment is that we wouldn't necessarily want events of over a hundred people anywhere. Down on River Street is, is kind of what I think you guys are getting at. Um, and if that's, if that's the. You know, the sense of the commission, then that's your guys' decision.
So what does that do to events like hops and props?
Um, hops and props is a special event, so that's out of the purview of zoning. Yeah, it wouldn't have any of. Yeah, it won't have any effect on current, uh, events that we have going on in town, or I know like the DDA had questioned. Um, some of our, like the Manastee and Marina may hold some catered events for guests, but. Things like that fall under. The accessory use of a hotel. Having, you know, or, and they're grandfathered, you know, some of these businesses have existed for so long that if they've been holding events. They're gonna continue to be able to hold their, their typical events.
Well, what about, um, and it's, it's probably the same as hops and props, but booze and broads, is that?
Yep, those are all gonna be special events under the purview of city council. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Temporary activities.
All right.
Yeah.
They weren't there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but can you imagine though, if you have a large, a large private, like reception the night of the. Victory parade?
Right.
So you have his hundred plus guests, plus everybody else who comes to town.
Yeah, but haven't we had it before? I mean, it's such, it's something new. Well, we've had parties before, we've had large groups of people, everybody parked, but nobody seems to.
Yeah, right now, probably, but. Like he wants to do on the, on the floor, I mean, that's. A lot of people.
How does safety come into play in this? I, I don't think we talked about that yet. No, yeah, I, I've been.
So anytime there's a new commercial use on a property or new commercial. And construction, um. I would forward that to the site, I have the authority to forward that to the site plan review committee. For, uh, for review. So something like this, if it was the new use of a place of public assembly large, I could forward it to. You know, the fire chief, police chief, city engineer, DPW, they have their opportunity to place stipulations as it relates to public health and safety. And then that would be part of the land use permit.
Could we, could we do that? Because. You know, what the? What, what, what is the, how, how is the evacuation for fires or?
Well, that, that is controlled by fire code and building code. So I know, speaking with this particular applicant, um. For his particular building, he did already meet with the fire marshal about his capacity limits and such. So that stuff is kind of controlled outside of zoning.
This one elevator in that building?
That I don't know.
Yes, there is.
There is.
Yeah.
This one?
Yes. It's where the sandwich shop is.
Yeah, I mean, generally, they have, like you say, Andy Taffin Festival and all that stuff, you know, like the.
Mm-hmm. And I don't believe the ordinance really dictates handicap. Accessibility either, that is also building code.
But I think if we're opening up, opening this up to something like that, wouldn't that be? Responsible for us to look at something like that?
I think that'd be more so looking at your overall parking standards, if that's something the planning commission wanted to address, requiring handicap parking spots. Um, but that wouldn't necessarily relate just to this. I think that if you wanted to look at that, it'd be looking at parking in general.
Well, there are some handicap spots in the bank. In the drive-through. Other, yes.
His lot, yeah.
Yes.
And there are a lot.
So there are that, there, excuse me, there are parking spots, sorry about that.
Right.
So it's quite a truck for somebody in a wheelchair to go all the way around the building, though. There's no easy way into the building on the backside.
No.
No, so.
Is there an elevator to the second floor or?
Yes. And is. Is there a? I'm gonna. Say a ballroom up there now?
Um, I'm unsure exactly what the, I know it's the third floor. I don't know if it's just kind of all stripped down right now, or if they're intending to, if they get. The use approved, um. Yeah, I'm not really sure. I have not been in the building, honestly. No. Mm-hmm. No.
Anybody know what we're talking about?
Well, and I do, I do want to stress that we have to think of it as not just, you know, this building.
No.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, my concern.
Well, the whole, the whole district. You have maybe two venues that can do it. In, in this district.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the, the bank. Which we're talking about now.
Yeah.
Bluefish, and how would that affect the bluefish? How would this affect the bluefish? Even, are they grandfathered in?
Um, so I don't know. Well, the bluefish, if they hold events, dinner parties, it's like, you know, to me, that still kind of falls under the purview of having a restaurant. If you're meeting the capacity of your restaurant, I don't think it would really have an effect on. Their current use.
If they, they can only have too many people in there.
Right, right, and, and, you know, getting into the semantics of zoning, who am I to say that, you know, if you have a dinner party that fills your restaurant, that's not. The same thing as just filling your restaurant. On a regular night.
Some kind of a name, but maybe like rooms like that's where it was.
Um, I know that their upper stories were all. Hotel rooms.
I think there's.
They had.
There's two rooms on the first.
Yeah, they have like a, a restaurant. Room that will be breakfast in the morning, but then convert to like a, you know, gathering and drinks area at night, and then. Yeah, they had a couple meeting rooms down there, so, but same thing for that, for a hotel, that would kind of fall under an accessory use of the hotel to have. Conferences, restaurants, things of that effect in your hotel.
And to the traffic and the parking.
Mm-hmm. They have required parking as a hotel, though, as well.
So the only, well, the only other building in the di- district. Would be the Elks.
Yeah.
So. Even though they probably don't do anything like weddings or anything, but they do have parties and things.
Mm-hmm.
Special parties.
Mm-hmm.
So would that be affected?
Well, they work out of the street.
Yeah. All over.
All over.
Yeah.
No, they would, they would still be able to carry on as is, and even so, they would be grandfathered to any change of the zoning ordinance, so. Even if we eliminated, like eliminated the use of. The Alex, I don't know what they're considered a restaurant or an organization or whatnot, but they're grandfathered in regardless, so they, they could potentially be considered like a place of public assembly under the zoning ordinance. But they're grandfathered for that use and can continue as they've operated until they seize the use. Um, so any amendment to the zoning ordinance won't necessarily affect existing businesses that are continuing to operate. Under their current uses. Mm-hmm.
Try to change, then they would have to comply with the updated one.
Right, if they, and really with a use, it would just have to be that the use seizes, yeah, if the use seizes for more than a year and no one else picks it up, then, you know, you're out, but. I don't know that any of those. The, the bluefish is definitely not non, non-conforming, um, and Alex is probably more like a, I don't even know, they're. Not technically a restaurant, because they're not open all the time, but.
Service club.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but they would be grandfathered. Regardless, so.
So there you go, it only made a three.
And I guess I will add one more thing that, under the current regulation, I don't know if I already said this, the PNC building would be able to have up to a hundred people, because places of public assembly small is already an allowable use in the district. And. They have. You know, they would be allowed to utilize that. Parking isn't required for that at this time, but they could tomorrow, go ahead and apply for a permit for a place of public assembly small. And have up to a hundred people.
Now, is that for the entire building or is that for each floor?
Um, it depends on, well, that would be for the entirety of the property, the place of public assembly small. Um, you know, they could. Say if they wanted to use two floors, if they showed that the use would be taking place, I mean.
I was just talking like.
Yeah, but they couldn't do.
Two separate parts.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do like a hundred people in one floor, a hundred people on the next floor, yeah. No.
And the people would have been covered.
Yeah.
Yeah. Three parties, but three other people.
So if we kept it as. Is today. What we, what would we need to do?
Um.
Turn it, turn it down?
Yeah, turn it down and it would die.
Okay.
And they could still have the hundred people.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion during it though.
Do we make motions during work sessions?
No.
No.
No, you can't, you gotta do it only.
Practice motion.
I. Get it out. Yeah, I don't mean for.
Till the, the next meeting. For next meeting. I mean, get a straw poll.
Well, that's what I mean, we gotta stop, I mean, all right, yeah, this is our, this is our third time.
Yeah. So. It's a straw poll, you say keep it as is?
Yeah, actually.
Marlene?
Come on the fence, because. This is sort of president, um, you know, when. And anybody else will come in, then that's another hundred and. Another and.
Yeah, I mean, once the use is lawful, anyone could come in and do it, but I think it would be, I don't think you're gonna all of a sudden see this popping up all over downtown if you approve it. But I also think it's appropriate to, you know, not allow for it if you guys don't think it's.
Is there a limit on the, on the, the meeting large?
That's what I wanted to look up in the ordinance, um, let me pull up, I do have the ordinance on my phone, because I was thinking about that too when we were discussing earlier. Um.
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering, it's, I was, small is a hundred or less, but if large is anything above.
I believe there is a limit to it, it's like up to, um, a certain amount. But I, I wanna say it, it might get into like the thousands.
I'll.
Or, or a thousand, I, if I'm remembering correctly, but I'll pull up the ordinance. But if you're requiring parking, then you can only have, you know, so many. Um, because I think it's, you have to have for the places of public assembly, you have to have four. Or one parking spot. Per four legal seats. Of capacity, so if you can't provide that, then you can only go as far as your parking allows for. So that would be another controlling aspect of the places of public assembly large. Mm-hmm. Cause I, and I was actually speaking with Ralph Carroll on that, not to bring it back to the specific property, but I believe he has roughly twenty-five parking spots. So in order to even, if approved, in order to utilize this amendment, he may need to obtain more parking.
So, yeah, okay.
Right.
I see, so they're, I think they're gonna have, yeah. So if we approve that, you don't have the parking to supply.
He may not.
He may.
I don't think his, and he didn't request for parking to be required, but ultimately, that's the decision of the planning commission to incorporate something like that. Um. Cause you can always modify his request, but yeah, that was something that was like, okay, full circle here. Um.
Sure.
So Marley?
She was welcome.
Okay, yes, places of public assembly large shall be considered a large facility if it has either two thousand square feet or more in gross floor area. Total seating capacity of more than one hundred and the largest room intended for public assembly. Or the capability to expand to meet these standards in the future, so it doesn't really give a, um, limit, mm-hmm.
Right.
One hundred, not the largest room. And then looking at the definition of small, it does say a place of public assembly shall be considered a small facility if it has. Either less than two thousand square feet in gross floor area or a total seating capacity of no more. Than one hundred in the largest room intended for public assembly, so it is calling out specific rooms there. Um. But. Yeah. But yeah, I mean, it's, we don't really have a. A recommendation, you know, either way, our recommendation would be that if you do approve it to include parking. But if you don't approve it, I don't think that that's. A, a bad thing either, you know, he shot, his shot is an, at an amendment and you guys went through the process. And if that process ultimately decides the planning commission does not want to approve it, then, you know, that happens.
Yeah.
Not every amendment someone proposes, you know. Gets passed.
You know, doing it for one, like you were saying, you know, you hate to do it just for one, I mean, there's only three places that it, the assembly can get that far. I mean, why? I'd say even then, I mean, that's why we, I mean.
Pam?
Yeah. We need to, we need to.
Marley?
We've answered.
Um, I agree.
Okay.
So.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at least the, the next meeting, we have to break stuff again to make a motion.
Yes, yep.
Mm-hmm. Motion next meeting.
All right.
Okay. All right, good, public comments, communication.
Cool.
Anybody that would like to say something? None? Correspondents?
None.
None, great. Member discussion? Anything? From the kids?
I'll be a hotel company, or don't we? Correspond with anybody.
Lake Shore?
Yeah.
I know that, um. Commissioner Joff Don had met with them down there. Uh, I do know there were some concerns about the balcony on the top floor, I don't know if that. Would have been brought to any of your attention, but I know that the building inspector was gonna be looking at the building plans, making sure that. Everything applied for matches the renderings.
No, okay.
Yes, so that has been a little bit of the bustle that I've heard about it. But other than that, yeah, we just kind of keep an eye on it and then we'll do a final inspection to make sure they're meeting all the conditions of their permit. Prior to occupancy, is our request, yes. Uh-huh.
If they're on schedule, then are they?
Yeah, from what I've heard, it, I haven't heard about them falling behind.
They have the.
They're getting heated during. They love flying, I think that's, it's gonna get cold here. They're gonna have to.
That's a good call.
All the layers, so we keep it on schedule.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
All the windows are ordered, so, all the Northern Michigan glass is gonna be doing all the. Installation windows and doors and such.
Yeah, yeah, they're not really running on the floor, nothing wrong.
Yep, that's their plan.
And what happened to, uh, do you know, have anything to do with the condos out of Lake there, all of a sudden, they're going right to town, put them together?
Um.
Jocelyn Cole, well, they have.
Oh, Jocelyn Cole, yeah.
They have to build those up.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so they have to be built to the specifications of the PUD granted in two thousand and six, I wanna say. Mm-hmm, yeah, so they have to be built to the specifications of the PUD granted in two thousand and six, I wanna say. Um, and under their brownfield agreement, I don't believe that there was a real timeline. Put on the PUD, the zoning side of the approval, but per the brownfield agreement, they do have to be built out, what was it, like twenty-eight months or something, Nancy? And we're into that. And then they do have six more units to build as well. Not along the lake, there's like six more that are closer to the Milwaukee, to the SS Milwaukee. And they're like perpendicular to thirty-one, so they'll come down, you know, yeah. Yeah, the developer who took that over, who is assisting Manastee Lakes Development, um. It's Todd Harding with Benchmark Capital. He is kind of managing the entire project and he is, um, on it, yes.
Now, same with, uh, Chippewa.
Chippewa cottages.
Be built out?
Yeah, so they have, well, they actually don't have a definitive timeline either.
I thought it was two years, so they have to build out.
No, they were under a old PUD that was approved as well, so I don't think that they have, um. Kellin Cack? Yeah, they intend to keep building. I know they've been working with, um, Mark Miller, and I did just go over their permit approval with them, made sure that they, you know. Were aware of their approved site plan and that everything in there has to be built to the site plan. Um, and, but they're all, they're all set to go, they just need to build it out, kind of the same as Jaws and Co., they've got that site plan. There's not really any more land use permits that need to be issued, and, um, I think that they're, they're really wanting to. Get the ball rolling on the rest of them, so. Not necessarily per zoning, so zoning ordinances in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act tends to give structures a lot of protection. Uh, you know, especially like our non-conforming structures or, uh, our, our uses, so. Under zoning, a lot of times you won't see anything that's gonna force someone to tear down a building, even, we don't even like to put blight. Stuff in zoning ordinances, cause you don't wanna grandfather light, you know, so. Uh, that would be more so under like the NRBC or the Blight program, if they're looking dilapidated and they need to go. There's not really anything in zoning that's gonna force something to go. It'd be more so your blight ordinance, or even like the building inspector deeming it a dangerous building, sometimes that can get. People to tear things down, so, yeah, but unfortunately zoning isn't really gonna make those structures come down. Yeah, if you wanna continue a use, you have to continue it within a year. But the structure itself typically does not have to be taken down, unless that's explicitly spelled out in the ordinance.
There's one on Twelfth Street, in the east end of Twelfth that came down. Winter's House, I think it was. There's another one right around the corner. They must have, because it was, it was blighted. It may be unlivable. Cam, you got anything?
Um, no, not really, other than you guys can scratch off my work number.
Congrats, yeah.
I don't have anything, how about staff?
Well, I guess I could say that the conference that we went to, it was really, it was fun, it was a nice networking event. And I did go to a couple housing sessions, which, um. I thought were pretty interesting with some of those things to bring back to the city, that it really does appear there. In Marquette, I know in Kalamazoo, they're just letting the market decide for residential parking. I don't know how, you know, I think there's a little bit of research that needs to go into that, cause you don't wanna. Make it so that people literally can't park on their streets, but, I mean, I lived in Marquette for college and that kind of. That kind of shocked me that they eliminated all parking standards, because there's a lot of kids with cars up there, and I know they had. They didn't have alternative parking ban, and maybe they changed that, it was just no street parking at night. So that was what I kind of wondered about with eliminating parking standards, if that had to be modified. Um, and then, one of the communities had a third party come in and do like a. Stress test on their zoning ordinance to see where the shortcomings or the. Um, difficulties are with, as it relates to housing, so I thought that was a kind of interesting concept to have. Some kind of company come in and, you know, stress test your zoning and say, hey, it's really difficult, or this isn't practical. With certain, certain regulations as it relates to housing, so. Um, yeah, it was interesting, there were, there were a couple of good sessions, I went to definitely good networking event, so, yeah. But that's, that's all I have for you guys.
No, I stayed in the office and held the fort down.
Always holding the fort now. Three hundred care?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything. I think that the Housing Commission is still potentially trying to make it work, but I'd not, I have not heard anything, I haven't gotten any phone calls, so.
All right, well, um, that is it, I'll take a motion to adjourn, adjourn. Motion second. Marlene, pass, time is seven PM.
That's right, oh, that's right, we started.
And we started about seventeen minutes after. Thank you, thank you everyone, good luck on your.